Good evening, everyone. And welcome to our regular meeting of the Strategic—oo, wrong one. Ha-ha. Of our Waburn City Council, held here at 5:00 PM Monday, August 19th, 2019. We—tonight, we are missing Mr. Richards. He is away on holidays at this point in time. When we get into the first note of business, is approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting. On that, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from July 22nd? Please.
I'll make that motion, your worship.
Second, please.
I'll second that, your worship.
Call the question. All in favor? Carrie. Any additions to the agenda? Mr. Warren.
No additions from administration, your worship.
Council members? Nothing? I just want to make note that when we move down to motions on 7B, that I shall be—as a conflict of interest—I shall be excusing myself from that vote. But we still have enough for a quorum. Moving forward, there's no public hearings and notices. We have proclamations and petitions. The Métis Nation of Waburn Local 87 proclamation will be read. And would you like to speak to it afterwards? On there? No? Okay. So here, Métis Nation Saskatchewan Waburn Local 87. Métis Nation Waburn Local 87 has declared September 3rd to the 9th, 2019, as Métis Nation Saskatchewan Waburn Local 87 Week. Métis Nation Saskatchewan MN-S is a government that represents Métis citizens in Saskatchewan. The Métis Nation Legislation Assembly, MNLA, is the governing authority of the MN-S. Mayor of the Presidents of the Métis Locals and the Provincial Métis Council. The MNLA has authority in act legislation, regulations, rules, and resolutions governing the affairs and conduct of the Métis in Saskatchewan. Métis Nation Saskatchewan Local 87 wants to create awareness about the local organization and encouraging citizens to participate. Therefore, I, Mayor Marcel Roy, City of Waburn, ask to hereby proclaim September 3rd to the 9th, 2019, as Métis Nation Saskatchewan Local 87 Week. I shall be signing that. Thank you. If you would, please, sir, come forward to the—come forward over here to the podium, and just make sure the button is on there. Is it on?
There we are.
Just identify yourself first, and then—
My name is Don LaFoy. I am the President of Waburn Métis Society Local 87. The reason that this is so important to the Métis people is because this will be the first ever in Saskatchewan proclamation and flag raising in front of a city hall building. It took a lot of work to get so we could do—actually do this, and we are really glad that hopefully, City Council will approve it.
And it has already been read into proclamation, so it's been approved. And on September 3rd at 11:00 AM, we will be having a ceremony and raising the flag out in front of City Council. We ask all to attend.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Comment to that. The flag is raised on September 3rd and there until September the 9th. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Very good. And I'll just pass that at one. Over. And she can give—she can give you a copy of that later on. Tomorrow, you can pick up a copy of that proclamation. Signed. Thank you. Moving forward, there's no reports at standing committees. Consent agenda. The council receivable report.
Your worship, I can make a motion that council accepts the council receivable reports for April 30th, May 31st, and June 30th, as presented.
I'll second that, your worship. Questions? Seeing none, call the question. All in favor? Carrie Denham. Building Department report. Do we have? Is it part of the agenda? We are just adding that in. Fire Department Activity Report and the Water Treatment Plant Report will be noted as received and will be viewed—can be viewed on the website if you wish to receive it.
Your worship, I do have a motion on the Building Department. I'd like to make the motion that council accept the Building Department's report for July 2019, as presented.
I'll second that. I'll second that, your worship.
All in favor? Carrie Denham. So going forward—going back, stepping back, the Fire Department Activity Report, do you have a motion?
Yes, your worship. I have a motion that the council accept the Fire Department Activity Report for June and July 2019, as presented.
Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Call the question. All in favor? Carrie Denham. Water Treatment Plant Report.
Your worship, that council accept the Water Treatment Plant Report for July 19th, as presented.
I'll second that, your worship.
Call the question. All in favor? Carrie Denham. Motions. First, is accounts payable. Do we have a motion, please?
Yes, your worship. I'd like to move that the purchase from July 19th, 2019, to August 15th, 2019, in the amount of $5,014,410.99 be passed for payment. The purchases include total quick payments by check of $382,556.60. Accounts payable by check of—total accounts payable by check of $4,102,802.85. And payable by EFT of $1,625.57. And direct withdrawals of $522,155.09. And debit card transactions of $5,310.88 be approved.
I'll second that, your worship. Question? Seeing none? Call the question. All in favor? Carrie Denham. On the next one, the Board and Committee Appointments. I'm going to excuse myself. It's a conflict of interest, and I'll pass the gavel on over to Mr. Chessel.
And I guess at this point, I also need a motion that the Parks Board recommend that City Council appoint Preston Roy to the Waburn Parks Board.
Just a question, a point on that. I don't think, sitting in that chair, you can forward the motion, and I would be happy to do that.
That would be perfect.
Is that correct?
I wondered. That's what I told him to tell Winston.
I'll do this one for you. I'd like to move that the Parks Board recommend the approval appointment of Preston Roy to the Waburn Parks Board.
I'd like to second that motion.
All in favor?
Opposed? Carrie.
Laura, missle if you would, please.
So this is just to get approval to proceed with the six-month notice that is sent for properties that owe their 2017 taxes.
Your worship, I'll make a motion that the city assessor be authorized to continue under Section 23 of the Tax Enforcement Act to serve the six-month notice and acquire title for the following land as listed on report presented.
I'll second that, your worship. Call the question. All in favor? Carrie Denham. There's no new bylaws to be looked at. Unfinished business. The third and final reading of the traffic bylaw amendment. And there was a amendment—there was an amendment to it that you wanted a—that railway would not be moved to 50 kilometers. Is that correct? Or is that passed?
No, sorry, your worship. So you—council made the vote at last council meeting, which was a 3-3 tie, which made that defeated at that time. So what administration has done is provided us the same report we provided at the last meeting on July 22nd, where you guys did do a second reading. We're asking for a third reading to happen tonight from City Council.
Discussion. Mr. Mickel.
I had a concerned citizen call me today and asked me to ask this at open council, and I will do that. His question was how many accidents at crosswalks have happened over the summer due to speed? I can't answer that, maybe from police commission? And then something else I want to share with you that happened probably 12 to 15 years ago on Railway Avenue. The police chief at the time was Bill Miller, and I believe that was my first year on police commission. And I challenged Mr. Miller about the speed on Railway Avenue. It should be 50 kilometers. He told me point-blank, "Mr. Mickel, let's go for a drive the next day." He drove there for five to 10 minutes, not even that, and he said, "Councillor Mickel, have a look at the businesses that will be affected by the speed." I say no more. That's why it remained at 40. Now, the question I asked the City Council, "Why are we increasing it to 50?"
My response to that is that we're moving forward as a city, going to North Battleford, every city that I traveled—and we'll discuss that later on—went to the Baseball Hall of Fame. Any major city—if you want to classify ourselves as major cities, and which we are, number 10 of the 10, and as Estevan is going to go down, we will be moving into number nine spot here—that any major city has a speed limit of 50 kilometers throughout their city as a city. And we are not a town or village such as Stoughton or Creelman or Fillmore or whatever. We are a city. And the point being is that we just want to make note that—that when we increase the speed to 50 kilometers on 16th Street, everybody went, "Oh, there's going to be carnage." There wasn't any carnage. I've policed here for 30 years, and I will dispute what Mr. Miller had, and I served under him too, and I'll dispute what they're having there. We had no issues with the problems on that. Our present police chief also, and our engineering staff, basically states there is not going to be an issue with it too. Remember that what this is, this does not mean that you have to be traveling at 50 kilometers. What it is, is it is at what point that the police will be charging and ticketing people. And we simply are not going to have to be—I mean, and it becomes this whole huge thing of where, on, what are we doing, and for the amount of tickets. So it is the ticketable offense. There's a lot of times you cannot even move along there because the traffic is not going in—you're going with traffic flow, and there's reasonability and traffic conditions, and also road conditions in the wintertime. You're not going to—on pure ice, you're not going to be traveling at 50 kilometers. So the point is, is that it's just simply going forward. And on the last comment, being that the—that—you know, there was statements when they were—that if we were to remove the left turn down the center of the city here on Third and Source, there'd be carnage. There hasn't been an accident since then. And we can move forward. Our citizens—I feel confident in our citizens that they will respect other drivers, and they will watch, they will break for people coming back out. It is all a part of the city. Go ahead. Ms. Van Betje.
Thank you, your worship. I don't think speed distinguishes whether a city is progressive or not, or whether you're a bigger city or a smaller city. It's all based on the safety of that particular road. I totally disagree. I agree with Councillor Mickel. I don't know what we're trying to fix. I don't know that it's broken. I believe there's a reason it is 40 kilometers an hour. When you're—there's all the curves, there's people backing out. When you're accessing from Ninth and Tenth Streets, you got to look around the curves to see if there's vehicles coming. A 50-kilometer-an-hour speed limit in the downtown core, I think, is too fast with the amount of pedestrians crossing the streets there. I just—I don't know what we're trying to fix by upping it to 50 kilometers an hour. I've had probably more residents talk to me in the last three, four—three weeks since this is—the topic's been up, and they all recommend—they all say, "Keep it at 40, keep it at 40." I've had not one person say, "50 is a good idea." I just—again, I just—I don't see what we're trying to fix.
So then that raises the question here, as there's two people voicing this here. That one motion to amend that was defeated last meeting because of it there, and I guess if you wish to make that motion again—
I have it—I have it here, your worship. The motion, and I just—I guess we should have done that to discuss it, made the motion first, but I've moved that the bylaw 2018-3379 be amended. The traffic bylaw 2016-3346 being the City of Waburn bylaw to regulate traffic and control the use of public ways be read a third and passed. Just a comment—I guess we need a second for that, sir.
I'll second that, your worship.
Okay. And then this—then it now comes into the thing that we can make amendment motion, as we did last time, if you wish.
Your worship, I don't think we can make a major amendment motion. We can maybe tweak the motion that—that exists. For example, it'd be maybe part of that street at 50 and part at 40, which I will not recommend. The only other way we can do it properly, in my—in my opinion, is—is vote down the third reading tonight. That means if it's a three-vote tie, the motion's lost, and we start all over.
Okay.
Yeah, your worship. I apologize for missing at last council meeting. I too have been talking to a lot of people, a lot of people talking to me about it, and I think, for the most part, they say, "Leave it where it is." In my respect, as you know, with speed limits in town, when we have talked about school zones, I've always supported the lower speed. So on this one here, again, like Councillor Van Betje said, I don't know what we're trying to fix other than increasing a small, short area that would take a few extra seconds at 50 kilometers rather than 40. So yeah, I'm just—I don't know what we're trying to fix. I really don't.
Any other comments?
Worship, I do agree with Marcel on this one—or, sorry, your worship, sorry. I guess myself did a social media post, and it was about 50-50 across the board, but more people I talked to individually were on the—the side of the 50. I do struggle with the comment, "Well, if it's 50, we're going to go 60." I—I think everyone needs to change their tone on that. If it's a 50, that's your max. That doesn't mean you can go 55 or 60. You can still do 40 down railway if you want, but the maximum speed would be 50. So if you're getting into an area where there is congestion, you should be slowing down anyway. So just because the speed's 50 doesn't mean you can go 10K over it, but that's my opinion.
Mr. Beal?
Yeah. I do have opinion on this, but I—I'm going to default to what the city engineer and the police department came forward. They made this recommendation. It wasn't necessarily a recommendation from council. So city engineering and the police department don't see any hazards raising it to 50, so for that reason, I will vote for this.
Before this council came into effect, it was three, four years ago, there was a traffic bylaw in front of us that said we have to raise residential streets to 50 kilometers per hour. Recommended—it was—it was here three, four years ago. And Councillor Stephenson was sitting right there on police commission and said, "That's just what came from police commission." That was talked about, debated, and voted down, and that's why it remains at 40. So what—they're doing in Regina or Saskatoon, North Battleford, your worship, has got nothing to do with what we do when we live in Waburn, Saskatchewan. That's my view. That's always been my view.
I find that very, very funny, because there's a lot of times—I've sat here in council for three years, and we've—I've heard numerous times, "Other cities are doing this, so we should be doing it too." And I'm going, "Really?" And then when it comes to this, all of a sudden, we're—we're deviating from it. So my point is that if we're going to—if that is the—the statement, then I would like to see that the councils that are sitting here not look to any other city to do whatever they're doing and start just doing our own thing. And if the other cities are—and we will be just walking our own walk. So at that point, any other comments? Moving forward, call the question. All in favor of accepting this third reading? All opposed?
So if it not being passed, we'll have to start over and re-advertise. I'll give a timeframe for that, but right now, it has to be stopped right now.
Okay. And then—so then, we can start this again in the fall on the—
I'll have to look back at the timeframe, then election on the timeframe for that.
Okay. Moving forward, we're going on to rural water requests are from an engineering department.
Waburn Utility Board have requested approval for hookup for a new residential water service for Kevin and Leslie Arthur. The owners have confirmed satisfactory sewage hauling arrangement, and the engineering department would recommend this to be approved, and the $10,000 connection fee does apply on this.
Do you have a motion?
Yes, you do. I have one, your worship. I'm prepared to make a motion and that the following request may be approved for a residential water service for Kevin and Leslie Arthur, Lot 5, Southwest 2107, 14W2.
Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
With no—seeing no questions, all in favor? Carrie Denham. City Hall Roofing Maintenance, Mr. Crowe.
Thank you, your worship. As reported at the May 15th Strategic Planning and Priorities Council meeting, the City Hall roof section on the northwest side of the building has failed, and elements from the outdoors are entering the building. We've seen significant leaks, and that's causing damage to the interior of the building, causing staff members to relocate office spaces, and has one—left one office space no longer usable. Water staining has also been noticed on interior tiles and other locations under this roofline, causing concern of future damages. If left unattended, this problem also has the potential to create an occupational health and safety concern as moisture continues to enter the building. As directed by council, a request for tender was initiated, and the following estimates were received, as you can see on the screen. The City of Waburn received three estimates with a spread of $54,630 between the low estimate and the high estimate, and each recommended a different roofing solution to fix our problem. Southland Roofing was the only company to confirm that the rooftop unit would not need to be removed if proceeding with their solution. Southland Roofing has proposed the use of a TPO roofing product. This is the same product that'll be installed on the new WRCC building and is also installed on the arched roof section of Crescent Point Place. Atlas Apex Roofing, who is the middle bid, provided an estimate using a conventional heat-applied torch-on roofing system that's installed in many of our facilities and other buildings throughout Waburn. However, this method requires the removal and the reinstallation of our rooftop unit that is currently situated on the roof. And with that comes substantial costs, and would—which would be the city to—the city's responsibility to manage. The additional costs to address the rooftop unit have not been included in their cost estimate, but we're estimating about $18,000 from start to finish. Flynn Canada submitted the high bid and suggested using a peel-and-stick product. This estimate that they provided included the costs associated with the removal and reinstallation of the rooftop unit that's currently in place. All three estimates have been provided by reputable companies, however, each has recommended a different product. As Southland Roofing has confirmed, the TPO system does not require the roof unit to be removed. The system would be the most cost-effective choice for the city. The award for this project would be $32,500 plus associated taxes.
Do you have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'd like to make the motion that the contract to repair the northwest section of the roof on City Hall be awarded to Southland Roofing for the amount of $32,500.
I'll second that, your worship.
Questions, discussions? Mr. Bailey?
I think we—sorry. I think we recognized that the unit up there was the main source of the water issue. Is that correct?
Well, we assume so. The problem with the system that we have currently in place is it's a gravel-on-tar system, and it's really hard to pinpoint the location that the water's infiltrating. So this product will—we'll get rid of the gravel and the system that's permanently on there, and then they'll wrap the whole roof—rooftop up the rooftop unit.
Okay. Okay. That's—that's good. Yeah, it's—we've worked with these people before. It's got the longest warranty or similar warranty of 15 years, so—sounds good.
Any other comments? People that have had issues? No? Call the question. All in favor? Carrie Denham.
Thank you.
Thank you. Quivers and announcements. Start off with Mr. Bailey. You have something?
I sure do, your worship. Again, just from the Agriculture Society, just a little report. Our fair was very successful this year. The attendance was slightly down, but then we ran one day less than last year also, so that would have a little bit of a bearing on it. So all in all, we had some good numbers and—well-received. The—in our meeting last Tuesday night, we spoke about the reception we had from the two major cattle shows that were here, and everything was very, very positive. And just taking a little time now to get the waste all cleaned up and the manure and straw out of there, so that should be done in—in short order. Just wanted to bring up some upcoming events, and I'll just do them on—in the order of the date. So movie night is on Tuesday, August 27th. It's kind of back-to-school, get ready. Hopefully, all the kids are back in town. That will be indoors at the Curling Rink. I don't know what the movie is. That hadn't been decided yet. But the tickets are $5 per child, or a whole family for $20. So it's very reasonable. So these have been well-attended. Doors open at 6:30. Movie starts at 7:30. So that's on Tuesday, August 27th. The next event coming up is the Fall Brawl—Fall Brawl. Got to say that one shortly—quickly. That's on Saturday, September—the September 7th, and that's another demo derby with all lots of other activities going on for—for that day also. And then third is the famous Flavors of Fall, October—Saturday, October 5th, again in the Curling Rink. And we already know that there are new exhibitors coming in, new food people, new drink people, so—as well as a lot of the repetitive people that have been there with their products and everything. So big event on—on the October 5th, again, for the Flavors of Fall. If anyone needs any information, Shannon's going to love me for this. Her phone number at the office is 842-306-8424052. If you need any particulars on it, Shannon will be happy to answer your questions for you. So it's—it's been—it's been a big summer for the—for the Agriculture Society, and —and I—I can't go without saying a huge thank you to all the volunteers from everywhere that came to help to make this summer a total success. Thank you.
Ms. Van Betje?
Thank you, worship. I just have a question for our—for Laura, our financial officer. With the—one of the cities in the province having an issue with some fraudulent payments, I just wonder if she could reassure our citizens that the city is prepared for this.
Yeah, so we don't do—
Yeah, so we don't do a whole lot of E F T transfers, it's something new to us, we've just started in the last couple of months, the only ones we've currently done are two employees for reimbursements, but it is something we're looking into and hopefully we'll do more of. With that, we have had, we have had requests to change like an employee's E F T, or like payroll, and to go to a different bank account, we followed up with a phone call to that employee to make sure, so that's, that's our process to follow up with that company to make sure, but we are working on a policy to put in place before we start sending out E F Ts to companies.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
If there's no other ones, I'll just have a couple here. Mr. Van Betje and I attended C E A Canadian Association of Police Governance meeting in Calgary a couple of weeks ago, it was, it was very good, there is always very good discussions on training, on governance training, we also get a chance to talk to police governance commissions from around, across the province, and as, across Canada, and one of the receiving very good training, again, like I say, and discussion on police governance. They all, one of the main things that Mr. Van Betje and I were able to bring back here too, was discussion on different ways that we're looking at, of selecting a new police chief, which will be in the process of here shortly, as our police chief is stepping down to take a government position on September nineteenth, will be his last position, so this was all very timely, very good, and we were able to make some very good contacts along the way to have interest. The other one, on the weekend here, I was able to attend to North Battleford, or Battleford, I should say, and we were, we as a community in Wayburn were inducted into the Baseball Hall of Fame as a community, for all the hardball that we had, have done through the years, we are recognized for the province, and this is initiated through Wayburn Co-op, and so we are, it's a very good recognition, and this will be displayed at City Hall here. Also, Elmer Frank was also there, and he was recognized too, inducted into the Hall of Fame, as for all the work that he's done through the Beavers, and for his fastball stuff that, that he played. Did you play against him in there? Okay, so this is all, and this again is baseball, it's not slow pitch, it's not fastball, it is hardball baseball for Saskatchewan Baseball League, so, and I didn't realize too that there's also the Little League Association, but that's an American one that is in here, so there's a variety of different ball ones, we've developed a lot of good ball players, and the Beavers had a very good year this year. Other than that, that is all, is there any other comments, questions? Seeing none, we shall call this meeting adjourned.